Good afternoon. Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting, an executive session and a work session on Tuesday, June 4, 2019 at 4:45 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We do have four members present, so we will go ahead and start with the invocation. Would everybody please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We bow our heads, please.
Dear Lord, as we give thanks for this wonderful day, we give thanks for the rain that we're receiving, that we're about to receive. We feel bad because it might hinder some of the graduations, but we ask for those students and their parents. We ask by the same token for all the graduates, both from high school and from their distinct universities. May you have blessings upon them and their families, and may your holy power be upon this meeting today. In this we pray. Amen.
Amen. I will now read the executive session agenda items. Executive Session A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087-1, 2 of the Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Offer of Financial or Other Incentives to Business Prospect Project Candy that the City of Brownsville seeks to have locate, stay, or expand within the city and which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. Executive Session B, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to Deliberate the Purchase of the Ghibik of Certain Real Property Adjacent to the Ghibik Industrial Park Located on FM 511. Executive Session C, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071-2 of the Texas Government Code to Provide Legal Advice Pertaining to the City's Obligations to Commission a Fiscal Audit Involving the Utilization of Federal Funds by the City for Emergency Medical Services, including obligations to provide such information to other government entities. Executive Session D, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Economic Development Project Hotel and the Hernandez Foundation. Executive Session E, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071-1 Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with Pending Lawsuit Style Number Brownsville GMS versus the City of Brownsville, Cost Number 2019-DCL-02693, 445th Judicial District Court in Cameron County, Texas, and Related Legal Matters. Executive Session F, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071-2 of the Texas Government Code to Provide Legal Advice in Connection with the City's Civil Service Disciplinary Process under Chapter 143 TLGC and the Collective Bargaining Labor Agreement between the City and the Fire Association.
And will we go into executive session?
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
We will now continue with the action items as discussed in executive session. Executive Session D, Consideration and Action Authorizing the City Manager to Negotiate and Execute a Term Sheet for a 380 Development Agreement Regarding Project Hotel Between the City of Brownsville and the Hernandez Foundation Subject to Legal Review and Final Commission Approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Steph has to read the term sheet.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm going to go ahead and read the term sheet for you. Developer Obligations, Developer Hernandez Foundation, Proposed Development of 138 Key Hotel with a Minimum of 8,000 Square Feet of Event Center and Newly Approved UT Rio Grande Valley Hospitality Tourism and Management Program Teaching Facility. Project Is Contingent Upon Execution of Separate Agreement Between the Developer/Foundation and UTRGV. Point Number Two, The Proposed Project Will Be Located on a 28-Acre Tract. The Site Is Located Off Expressway I-69 Between Morrison and Alton-Glorious Boulevard. The Total Cost for Developing the Project Including Land, Design, Construction, and Financing Is Approximately $37.1 Million. Point Three, The Program Will Feature Dual Enrollment Programs for Local High School As Well As Hospitality Management Programs At the University Level. UTRGV Has A Preliminary Open Date For The Fall Of 2020. Estimated enrollment Is Projected To Start At 60 Students In 2020 And Grow To A Stabilized Count Of 250 Students By 2023. Point Four, The Adjacent Hotel Will Be A Select Service Four-Story Hyatt Place Hotel Consisting Of 138 Rooms And Totalling Approximately 84,284 Square Feet Including Event Space That Will Be Designed/Constructed In A Matter That Allows For Expansion Of Event Space. Professional Management Team Will Manage The Hotel. Point Five, The Developer/Foundation Will Pay City Property Taxes. Point Six, Developer/Foundation Will Provide A Reduced Competitive Net Lease To UTRGV Subject To City Review And Prior To Receipt Of City Incentives Outlined In the City's Obligation Section Of The Term Sheet. City's Obligations, Support Of Public Infrastructure For Roads, Land Scapeing, and Support Amenities Not To Exceed $2 Million And Contingent Upon City Approved Design Based Upon City Development Standards And Funding. Point Two Under City Obligations, A City Tax Incentive In The Amount Of 100% Of The City's 7% Hotel Occupancy Tax Collected/Generated By The Project For Up To 20 Years And Not To Exceed $9 Million, Contingent Upon The Receipt And Review Of A Performa And Lease Between The Developer/Foundation And UTRGV And Also Contingent Upon A Separate Hotel Occupancy Tax Agreement Between The Developer/Foundation And The City In Brownsville. The Term Sheet Will Be, This Term Sheet Is To Be Used As A Negotiation And Execution As Part Of Chapter 3 Haiti Development Agreement Between The City Of Brownsville And The Hernandez Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen, for all your work and know it as well, City Administration.
This is really exciting for the City of Brownsville. This is something that we've waited for, for a very long time. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Executive Session E, Consideration And Appropriate Action If Any Authorizing The City's Legal Defense Counsel In The Lawsuit Style The Number Brownsville GMS Versus The City Of Brownsville, Cost Number 2019-DCL-02693 At The 445th Judicial District Court In Cameron County, Texas, To Initiate And Perfect An Appeal From The Entry Of The Court's Temporary Injunction Order Announced At The Hearing Held On May 30, 2019.
Good evening, everybody. This is an item, it's more of a housekeeping matter than anything else. There was a, at this point, a verbal temporary injunction entered by the judge in this matter last Friday. We don't have a written order yet, but with the temporary injunction, the city has the ability to pursue an appeal. This case is a case that's been assigned to us through the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool, which you're a member of, and so we still need to consult with them on this, but we are asking that you delegate to city attorney and legal defense, assign legal defense counsel the authority to pursue that appeal when and if the time is right to do that. So we have a very short window on that, so we want to get this out of the way. I still need to consult with the TML attorneys on this, but as far as your part on this, I wanted to get this done today. So we're asking that you delegate authority to pursue the appeal, if appropriate, to legal defense counsel, and that would be the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nauter. Do I hear a motion on the floor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
City Secretary, please note that I'm abstaining from this vote and that I did not participate in any executive sessions related to this issue. Thank you.
Next, we will go into work session, Discussion and Inquiry From Third Party To Purchase City Hall Property With Partial Lease Back.
Good evening, Commissioner. The City Has Received A Letter Of Interest Or An Unsolicited Request From A Third Party To Purchase City Hall Located At 1001 East Elizabeth Street Here In Brownsville And To Offer Possible Lease Back To The City For Our Office Use. Just To Give You Some Background, When A Municipality Sells Real Property, It Must Comply With Texas Local Government Code, Section, Chapter 272, Which Only Authorizes The Sale Of Real Property By Either Auction, Sealed Bids, Or The Other Option For Sale Of Real Property Is Through A Broker By Accepting The Highest Cash Offer. As Such, When A Municipal Sells Property, There Are Really No Negotiations With Regard To A Third Party Unsoliciting An Offer Or Giving An Offer. If The Commission determines That It Is, Would Like To Consider Selling City Hall Or Municipal Property, Then It May Be Placed On A City Open Session Agenda To Approve Selling The Property And The Method To Be Used As Authorized By Texas Law. Staff Is Asking That The Commission Give Us Direction With Regard To Any Interest In Selling The Property By These Means, So That We Know How To Give Direction To This Third Party Request.
So someone is asking about purchasing this building?
Yes, And Offering The City A Lease Back For Our Use Under A Certain Amount Of Terms. So, I mean, I guess one thing is to consider if they were to buy it, then it would come back on our tax, property tax rolls, but at the same time, we're still using the building, so we would probably negotiate a lease. But either way, the question is, I need to give direction to this requestor. Is That Something You Want Us To Consider And Study And Give Direction On? Is It Something That We Shouldn't Even Consider? And So Therefore, I'm Saying, You Know, We Wouldn't Even Consider It. I Just Need Direction In Terms Of, Should I Just Outline This Is The Process By Which It Would Only Be Allowed Through Chapter 272 To Be By Public Auction, And So There Would Be A Highest Bid Received? I Just Need Direction In Terms Of How Should I Respond To This Offer?
So I have questions. Are We Allowed To Know Who's Offering To Buy It?
We cannot be involved in a negotiation with them. I don't see the harm, so it could be something disclosable.
Okay, So The Requestor Is The Post Office? Because The Post Office Currently Occupies The Ground Floor, And So They Would Like To Purchase Their Own, The First Floor. That's How, They Said That They Would Like Two Options, Either To Purchase The First Floor Because Their Occupied Space There And They Want To Continue To Operate At Post Office, But Then They Were Also Considering, Because They Have Post Offices Throughout The Nation And The State, What If We Were To Purchase The Whole Building, Occupy The First Floor, And Then Lease It Back To The City? So That's Where This Offer Or Request Interest Came From.
Right Now, Do We Lease The First Floor?
Yes, We Do, Sir.
So I have concerns, Because This Public, This Building Belongs To The Public, And It's Their Place Where They Come For Information And Knowledge, And It Doesn't Really Belong To Us, It Belongs To The Public. So I Have Issues With, I Mean, I Know The Post Office Is Legit, But I Believe This Building, Not Only For Its Historical Content, But For The Federal Courthouse Content And What It Was, Belongs To The People Of Brownsville.
So Just To Interject, So Typically, Cities Many Times Have A Master Facilities Plan, Right? So When These Types Of Requests Come In, They Don't Catch You Off Guard As Much, Because You Typically Have An Idea Of Space Needs, Condition Of Your Facilities, Roof Replacement, HVAC Replacement, Using Public-Private Partnerships, Which This Is A Public-Private Partnership. We Don't Have To Entertain This. Our Obligation Through The Work Session Is Simply To Advise You, So That We Can't Respond From A Staff Perspective, Because It's Not Our Prerogative To Respond Unilaterally Without Your Direction About How To Entertain This Offer. We Have To Bring It To You. The Post Office Company Is Also A Developer, And They Also Own Properties, And They're Saying, Hey, We'd Like To Reverse The Relationship. What Do Y'all Think? Right? They Have Made Some Initial Offers To Us. We Can Disclose However Much Y'all Have, Would Like To Know In Terms Of What We Know Thus Far, But 272 Comes Into The Equation. We're Not Saying That You All Are Interested Or That The City Is Interested. We Just Need To Give Them A Response, And Our Duty Is To Bring It Up To Your Attentions, Which Is What This Is For.
So Is There Possibly Some Kind Of Hybrid Relationship To Where They Don't necessarily, They Don't Buy The Building? Because As Commissioner Tetra Said, I Have A Few Pretty Strong Reservations About That, But I'm Sure The Building Needs Particular Updating Or Repair. Is There A Way To Hybrid It To Where They Do Provide Those Upgrades And Repairs And In Return, We Give Them Extra Space In The First Floor? You Know What I'm Saying? In Other Words, Instead Of Outright Buy The Building, Is There Some Relationship In Another Way That We Can Build With Them?
I Can't Really Speak For Them, With Them, Other Than They, I Think The Purpose For The Request Was Because They Do Occupy The First Floor, And The Question Is, You Know, Can You Condo It, Condo Out The Building?
That's What I Was Going To Ask.
And Then Sell The Ground Floor. Of Course, That's Still A Sale Under 272, And We Still Would Have To Make It Public And Entertain Offers For A Ground Floor, Which May Or May Not Go To Them, Because We Have To Consider The Highest Price At That Point. And So, But Understanding That There Could Be A Hybrid There, Maybe They're The Only Ones That Would Be Interested In Purchasing The Ground Floor, Because They're There. But I Don't Know If Developer X, Y, and Z Would Also Be Interested In Give Us A Better Offer On Conduing Out The Ground Floor. And So That's Why We Go Back To Chapter 272, Because We Need To Consider The Highest And Best Offer For Any City Property.
And Do You Want Our Opinion Here? Without An Action Item? Or Do You Want It In Right?
Yeah, So Today We Can Get Direction, So Work Session, You Don't Have To Take Action. It's Just General Direction. We Would Understand From Your Feedback That There Is No Interest, Or There Is Interest. What We Would Have To Do Is Under 272, For Example, Is Have To Develop A Bid Process Or A Big Spec And Say, Okay, We're Pursuing Interested Parties For This Hybrid Or For A Condo Approach, Whatever. If There Was That Level Of Interest, Then We Can Tell Them, We're Going To Go To Work In Developing Under 272 A Process That You Can Respond Through, And We'll Entertain Your Offer There. Right Now, We're Just Giving You Knowledge, And Before We Even Design That Process, That Would Then Allow Them To Officially Respond Through For Your Consideration, We Need To Know Today, Is That Something You're Even Interested? If Not, Why Would We Dedicate Staff Time, Energy Resources Toward That End? So That's The Purpose Of Today's Discussion.
So Legal, Just One More Time, If I Make My Concern, And We're All Obviously Going To Stay Where We Want To, It Won't Be Considered A Vote, Right?
No, It Isn't. It's Just A Workshop. You're Fleshing Out Ideas, Giving Direction, Or Perhaps Giving Them Instruction As To Develop Me, Developing A Master Plan In regards To Where The City's Facilities Should Be Here Within 10, 15 Years. Just Giving Them Direction. That's The Benefit Of The Workshop.
So The Advantage Is It Goes Back On The Tax Rule, And We Save Costs On Maintenance.
Yes, If You Do The Whole-
But We Have To Lease It Back, So Do You Know The Cost Differential? Or Do We Have An Analysis On That?
I Do Not. That Would Probably Part Of Our Due Diligence Would Be A Cost Analysis Of The Capital Expenditure Cost That We Would Have To Incur, What Lease We Would Want To Be Able To Negotiate, I Mean, All That, And Then Also The Process And Procedures A City Manager Outline For Doing All This. If We Respond And Say, This Is The Process And The Procedure That We Would Have To Do, They May Or May Not Still Be Interested. And It's Just Me Giving Them Process And Procedure Under Government Code And Under, You Know, Possibly Entering To A Public-Private Partnership.
And For Us, There's No Urgency On That. We, All Our Facilities And The Air Conditioning And Plumbing And All That Stuff's Fine Right Now, Right?
Well, Actually, What I Will, So This Budget-
That Was My Next Question.
This Budget, What You're Going To Have Is We Are Working On A Facilities Plan. We Are Learning A Lot More. We Have Some Knowledge, But We're Working On A Project That Would Allow Us To Perform Some Energy Efficient Improvements In Our Facilities And Reinvest Those Savings Back Toward Weatherization, Lighting Efficiencies, Roof Replacements, HVAC Retrofits, And Believe Me, We Do Have Costs. And One Of The Things Is, This Facility, This Building Would Be Part Of That Plan, So We Would Anticipate Being Able To Fund The Improvements Needed Here. So If We Want To Play By Error And Say, Well, Let's See What This Study Shows, What This Program Is Proposing, Which We'll Bring To You As Part Of The Budget, Maybe It'll Look Different To You, Because You'll Say, Okay, Well, We Have A Plan To Fix The Needs We Do Have. Maybe We Don't Need To Be Considering This Hybrid Approach. But I'll Tell You That There Are Some Needs, But We Also Have A Plan For Addressing Those Needs, And You'll See That In The Next Couple Months.
I Feel Like The Public Should Have A Lot Of Input In This, Because This Building Belongs To The Public, But I Also Feel Like The Most Important Aspect Of Brownsville Is Our Historical Value And Where We Come From. And I Feel Like When You Start Putting Things Like That For Sale, We Get Lost In The Mix Of Who We Are And Where We Come From. And So I Feel Very Strongly That This Courthouse, Which Has Then Become City Hall, Is A Very Big Part Of Who Brownsville Is, And This Is Where The Public Knows To Find Us, And I Don't Like The Fact That Anybody Else Would Own Something That Is So Valuable To The People Of Brownsville.
Yeah, Absolutely. Yeah, And That Can Be Quantified, Right?
Yeah.
History Can Be Quantified, And We're Not Proposing, We've Not Made Any Insinuation To That Fact, It's Just, We Have To Bring It Before You, Because We Can't Respond On Our Own. We Need To Get This Before You, At Least For Some Direction.
I'm Not Interested Either.
So It Sounds Like The Direction Is, We're Not Interested, We'll Respond, We're Not Interested, And Then We'll Bring Back A Facilities Plan, Which You'll Learn More About, Your Question About Where We Are With Regard To City Hall.
City Hall Is Not For Sale.
Sounds Great.
Thank You, Commissioner.
Okay, Thank You.
Next, We Have A Presentation, The Texas Monthly Live Update.
How Are Y'all?
Hello, Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, Well, Thanks For Taking The Time To Let Me Give You Guys An Update. Courtney Spence With The C. Spence Group. Been Working Hand In Hand With The City Of Brownsville Team And The Texas Monthly Live Team, And Just Wanted To Share With You All Where We Are With The July 9 Show At The Texas Southmost College Performing Arts Center. So As Y'all Know, Texas Monthly Live Is In The Midst Of Its Four City Tour With Their Show. They Had Their First Show In Austin Last Week. And Just As An Aside, I Had An Opportunity To Attend, And I Have To Say, It Is One Of The Most Engaging, Inspiring, And Kind Of Humanistic Shows I Have Ever Seen. You Have Stories Told By Reporters And Editors. You Have Carrie Rodriguez And Her Band That Play During And Each Performance, Each Show, I Mean, Each Story. And Then You Have In The Background, You Have Animation And Video, And So It's A Very Immersive, Very Human Experience, And In All Honesty, I Cried And Laughed At Every Story, And It Made Me Very Proud To Be Texan. It Made Me Learn A Lot About Different Areas Of The State, And I Couldn't Be More Proud That They Are Coming To Brownsville, Not Only To Bring These Stories To The Brownsville Community, But Also To Uplift Brownsville Stories As A Part Of The Show. Just A Few Small Updates On The Show Itself. It's Coming Along Beautifully. In Terms Of Sponsorship, We Have Confirmed More, Like A Higher Number Of Sponsors In Brownsville Than Any Other City Has Provided. And For Us And For Texas Monthly, That Really Shows That The Business Community And The Whole City Is Really Excited About This Opportunity. Similarly, We Are Ahead Of Ticket Sales, Pre-Sales. We've Sold More Tickets For This Show Than We Have For Houston Or Austin Or Any Of The Other Shows At This Point In Time. We Only Have About 250 Tickets Left, And I Think That Also Just Demonstrates That The Community Is Really Interested In This As Well, And Texas Monthly Is Really, Really Excited About That. In Terms Of Content For The Show, We've Locked Into Brownsville Stories. The First One Is Called The Star Hunter, And That'll Be Told By Senior Editor Carlos Sanchez. And The Other Story Is Brownsville's Bicycle Revolution By Writer At Large Wes Ferguson. The Texas Monthly Team Also Wanted Me To Just Make Sure That I Said That The Partnership That They've Had With The City Has Been Remarkable. We Have Weekly Status Calls With The City Of Brownsville Team, And Really Have Been Working Hand In Hand On Everything From Sponsorships To Promotion To Content, And I Think It's Really The Beginning Of A Much Deeper Relationship Between Texas Monthly And The Community Of Brownsville And The Valley, Which Was The Whole Purpose And Intention Of This As Well. In Terms Of Next Steps, We Are Finalizing Our List Of Sponsors. We Have 250 Tickets Left To Sell, And We Will Be Also Working On The Details Of The Afterparty, Which Is Going To Happen At The Lawn Outside Of The Performing Arts Center. And So Just In Closing, It's Been A Real Honor To Work With You All. I Love Your City, I Love Your Community, And I Couldn't Be More Excited For What July 9 Will Bring. I Think It'll Be The First Of Many Opportunities To Work With Texas Monthly And More Statewide Publications In A Very Positive And Engaging Manner That Both Engages The Community And The State At Large. So, Thank You.
Thank You.
Thank You For All Of The Work That You've Done For Our City. We Are Very Grateful.
Thank You.
And It's Great To Hear That There's A Lot Of Interest In It, So It's Glad.
Yeah, It's Very Exciting.
Let's Start Planning Next Year.
Exactly.
Thank You.
Thank You.
Next, We Have Consent Agenda Items A Through L.
Do We Have A Motion On The Floor?
Shall Move?
Second.
All Those In Favor?
Aye.
Motion Passes.
Next, We Have Public Hearings, Public Hearing Number Three, Public Hearing And Action On First Reading On Ordinance Number 2019-1655, Amending The Code Of Ordnances, Chapter 348 Zoning By Adding The New Article 10, Short Term Rental, Section 348-1550 Through 348-1580 And Dealing With Related Matters.
Good Evening, Commissioner. My Name Is Mirna Leal. I'm A Planner With The Planning Development Services Department. Oh? And I Will Be Talking To You Today About Short Term Rentals. We Did Introduce This Subject In January When We Did A Workshop, And We Are Now Presenting The Ordinance That Would Allow Short Term Rentals To Not Only To Thrive, But Also Protecting The Community In Which They Operate In. So Some Of Our Background And Research, Like I Mentioned, We Did A Work Session Presentation Back In January. Part Of Our Research Was Reviewing The Cities Of Capel, San Marcos, Fredericksburg, Galveston, San Antonio, And South Padre Island. We Also Did Some Research With Other States And What They Have Done, But We Really Stuck To The Cities Within Texas As Reference. This Is A Proactive Approach, And We Anticipate A Lot Of Interest Due To The Island And The SpaceX Launches. And Since The Workshop At That Point, We Had Done Some Research That They Were At Minimum At Least 50 Short Term Rentals. And Now, Six Months Later, We Did A Little Bit More Searching, And We Are Now Seeing Approximately About 70. So If This Growth Continues In Brownsville As It Has In Other Cities, I Think This Is The Perfect Time For Us To Bring In This Regulation. So The City Of Brownsville Recognizes The Growing Market And Industry Trends For Short Term Rentals. Regulations Are Not Meant To Hinder Short Term Rentals, But More So To Allow Them To Thrive While Protecting The Community. And There Are, They Will Assist In Maintaining The Integrity Of The Neighborhoods In Which They Operate While Facilitating The Sharing Economy. And When We're Talking About The Sharing Economy, We're Talking About People, How Should I Say This? Sharing Expensive Assets That Would Normally Sit Idle. So Cars Or, You Know, Houses, Whatever It May Be. And This Also Allows For Multiple Income Streams, Streams Of Income, I Apologize. Because Of Technological Advances, There Has Been A Change With The Sharing Economy. So For Example, What May Have Been In The Past Renting Out Farming Equipment To Local Ranches Or Tupperware Now Is Airbnb, Ubers, And Lyft. So With Achieving Compliance, The New Ordinance And Short Term Regulations Would Apply To All Existing And Future Residential Rental Properties, Units, Accessory Structures, Anything That Would Be Used As A Short Term Rental. All Existing Short Term Rentals Will Have Until October 1st. So If This Ordinance Is Approved, Staff And Public Would Have Until October 1st To Come Into Compliance And Prepare For Regulation. Every Short Term Rental Must Register With The Planning Development Services Department. Property Owners May Register Multiple Short Term Rentals, And Registration Would Be A One-Time Occurrence Unless There Is A Change In Ownership In The Short Term Rental. There Will Be-
City Secretary, Please Note That I Have To Step Out For Graduation. Thank You.
Thank You.
There Will Be A License Required. Short Term Rentals Shall Be Required To Be Licensed In Order To Operate As A Short Term Rental. One License Per Short Term Rental, And The Licenses Will Expire Two Years From The Date Of Issuance. And They May Be Revoked At Any Time By The Planning Development Services Department For Good Cause. And The Main Goal Of This Ordinance Is To Ensure That All Short Term Rentals Meet Minimum Safety Requirements To Protect Their Potential Guests As Well As The Community Around Them. After Reviewing Our Chapter 18 Buildings And Buildings Regulations, Speaking With The Building Officials, Speaking With The Fire Marshal And The Fire Department, We Have Created, These Are Just Some Of The Minimum Requirements That We Are Going To Ask Be Installed In Short Term Rentals. So For Example, A Fire Extinguisher, Smoke Detectors, A Carbon Monoxide Detector, Or Possibly More If There Is A Gas Line In The Structure, An Evacuation Plan. Burglars Would Not Be permitted Unless An- Burglars would not be permitted unless an emergency exit is available within the bedrooms and sleeping areas. And all electrical plugs within six feet of water source must be covered, as well as have the ground fault circuit interrupter.
Chief, carbon monoxide detectors, are those expensive?
No. You can purchase those at Walmart or Target.
Okay.
And the only reason why you would have more, they are required if there is an attached garage. So if there's a hallway leading to that attached garage, they would want one there. If there is a gas line within the structure of the dwelling unit, you would want them For inspections and safety requirements, an inspection will be required upon registration and prior to the first rental occupant. And short-term rentals must comply with all applicable city adopted codes, regulations, and ordinances.
And who would do the inspection?
The code enforcement, or the inspectors with the Planning Development Services Department.
So existing, Airbnbs, for example?
Airbnbs, existing?
Yeah. They have to come and register themselves and comply and everything?
Yes, and so they would have until, if it's approved tonight, and then the second reading, obviously, they would have until October 1st to come into compliance.
And I know what's coming. You know, it's, once they go get inspected, are they going to be going through what most of the complaints that we get through are going to be coming? In other words, these people are trying to make an extra income. I understand that everybody needs to be able to go, especially if you're going to be hosting somebody to be staying. But what I'm scared of is we're going to get to the point where these people are trying to rent out their place for an Airbnb, and then all of a sudden, it's like, we need to shut down your structure. You know, you need to shut down. You need to be, you know, and then all of a sudden, it's like, wait a minute, I had, you know, this little home, this apartment.
You need a fire.
Or there's a month turnaround to get the permit.
Well, I think because it's a new role, we're rolling out a new ordinance, there's going to be a lot of education, workshops, work sessions. Also, many of our building and code enforcement officers are cross-training, so we have more officers. We're also in budget season in terms of expanding inspection services. So we're going to be proactive and also educating, and there'll be some time to get people into compliance. It is a new ordinance, it's still new, so I don't want you to feel that or are.
No, but from prior experience, and of course, there's always two sides to the story, sometimes three. You know, so when we, it's not accusing our staff, it's not accusing the, but the complaints that we get from the customer or from the citizen is, look, I was just trying to do what was right, and then all of a sudden, your staff came in and said this, 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 and this. Wait a minute, I wanted to make a door. And then all of a sudden, they're telling me that I have to break down a structure. Of course, there's two sides to the story, and this particular case, there was three. But in essence, when it initiated, they just wanted to do a door.
Right.
You know? And then our staff came in, and it turned into World War III.
Here's a thought. So currently, and there's a lot of flexibility here, the thought is, October 1st to allow for a transition. That can be pushed to January 1st. One of the things, and y'all received an email from me yesterday about our planning efforts, if we're struggling with the codes and the inspections and the processes, it's not going to be limited to short-term rentals. It's really a universal issue.
But that's why he's bringing it up.
That's exactly.
Right. And my point being that we're looking at that right now. If you saw that Friesen Nichols summary I sent yesterday, we're looking at our codes, we're looking at all of our development regulations. So in other words, we're going to do some cleanup, we're going to look at what is essential, what is not. So in other words, making decisions are not because of the way our current system functions, when we're going to make improvements to it, and we're recognizing that. Again, we can delay it to where the point, to the point where we have made some of those refinements to our system and then bring this online, but if we're having struggles with approving something because of our current systems, I think the question is, what are we doing to improve the current systems? Because it would be a challenge to not take on certain things because of that. And the question is, it's got to get addressed, and we're addressing that.
And I have a, do you know what the, what are you anticipating for the fee to be?
So we are planning, like any other ordinance that we usually undertake within our department, we do a cost analysis. We want it to be a fair fee that is really going to cover any overhead costs.
But what do you get in mind for that?
So I can use, personally, I can use the landscape variation ordinance. We use what is the average mileage, what is the gas that has been used, what is the salary of the person. We don't take into consideration the benefits and everything else.
Does the inspection?
Yes. So those are the things that help us come up with a fee total.
If the commission likes, we can come back and research it and come back with a fee, if that's what you would like us to do.
And what about appeals as well? Appeals go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that dies there, or do they get to come to the City Commission after that?
Well, with anything like the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there is an appeal to that, then it normally comes to the City Commission.
So they would still be able to appeal it to the, okay.
I think October is really ambitious, personally, but because you do have other corrections, as you pointed out, that you need to make. And I think that we need to know what those fees are going to be.
I had family that came in and stayed at an Airbnb at Brownsville Country Club, and it was a great price. It was, and so it was a very nice place. So they wanted to come stay again in May, and the island was at $400 a night versus $88 in Brownsville for the Airbnb. I would hate to kill that kind of business that's starting to generate, starting to grow in Brownsville.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. We'll look into prices and others, what other cities are implementing, and also what their cost recovery is. We can push back the date if you would like for us to come back and report on pushing back a date. And also, as City Manager identified, we have, we are looking at, our consultants are coming Friday, and we're looking at improving processes, you know, so that we can address some of those overarching comments that we've received. And I know staff is a resource, it's an educational process as well because it is a new ordinance. And we all stay at Airbnb, so we can understand the value of an Airbnb has to a community. But we also, at the same time, understand that our neighborhoods have to be preserved, and so you may have enhanced trash, you may have enhanced noise, and so we also want to protect our neighborhood. So it's a balance between both, and I think you can have both, offer them both. And also with SpaceX, and we don't know what that phenomenon will be with the hopeful successful launches, you know, will that bring about new, you know, we will not have enough rooms. I mean, even when I've come with my family law, even before I took the job, and vacancy rates are very low at our hotels, which is a blessing, and that's one of the reasons that you're looking at the hotel, incentivizing a new hotel here in Brownsville. But there is a need for Airbnbs. I'm the first one to tell you, there is a need because we have such low vacancy rates at our hotels. So we don't want to make it too cumbersome, but maybe we can find a way to make it both.
The idea of the hotel tax is not bad, but you've added so much regulation in there that that's what I think has got us a little nervous.
I'd rather stay at a hotel.
Well, you know, when I travel, sometimes I stay at an Airbnb, and sometimes I go to hotels, and it really depends on what kind of city I'm in, what kind of experience I want, and so on and so forth. And full disclosure, I have an Airbnb in my house. I'm not going to argue about safety, obviously, that's an important thing, but, and I'm not going to vote on this issue because I have an Airbnb, but I think I'm allowed to ask questions.
You can.
And there are a lot of people that did call me today about similar questions, and I think there's something in the ordinance about parties or celebrations or something like that.
Yes.
And I don't see the point of outlawing a party if it's a respectful, not obtrusive, not causing, you know, issues, if it's a, you know, let's say, a birding organization that are very, you know, executive-type people that behave, and they're not disrespectful, and they're not throwing trash and being rowdy.
You'd be surprised about those executives.
Why should we restrict that type of function?
Well, what we can do is modify that and then revert to our noise ordinance, which is somewhat vague, but, you know, that's another thing that we probably have to look at. But, you know, we can, we can take all your concerns in. I think this is a great time to take in all your concerns, and we can come back and modify that and.
I had thought about one thing, and I'm sorry, but when Ben mentioned it, it triggered. Are the Airbnbs contributing to the hot tax?
Not right now.
Not right now.
But that was the original purpose, and that's fine, but now you've got all these.
Permit fees and this and that.
Regulations.
I mean, I would like to think that they're all very, very safe, but, and I don't necessarily disagree with the fee, as long as it's not going to drive people out of providing Airbnbs.
Absolutely. We can do an analysis of the fees and also the cost recovery, and it can be maybe commensurate or similar to our inspection fees, so we'll look into that.
So I guess we all agree it's a work in progress, right?
So should we?
Yeah, can we?
We'll bring it back.
Move the table.
We'll bring it back.
What we can do is, Mira hasn't finished her presentation, so if you want to go through the presentation, we may get more comments, and so when we come back, we can address all the different comments. Thank you. So in mind with the safety issues, we would require property owners to have at least a minimum, at minimum, an insurance policy sufficient for personal injury liability of the guests that would be coming into your home. And for fees, the Planning Development Services Department staff shall create a schedule of fees for registrations, onset inspections, re-inspections, licensing, licensing renewals, and appeals. And this is something that you, and the main goal, sorry, one second. The current ordinance does not have fees listed, but it would be something that would need to come back to City Commission for your approval. And like I said, the Applying Development Services staff does do a cost analysis to look into all of the things that might come into play. But we are trying to ensure that we have a fair fee that the owners of these properties would be able to afford. And for hotel occupancy tax requirements, they would now be required by the hotel occupancy tax requirements of the city as set forth by Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, taxation, to pay the 7% required of the consideration paid by the occupant. So it's the cost, if you were to go to a hotel room, it's the cost of what you would pay for that hotel, 7% of that. And our next step, so staff will host educational workshops in July and August prior to ordinance implementation. Communication staff will promote the new ordinance to assist with public education and outreach. And staff will attend a conference on short-term rental regulations in August in Austin. As well, the City of Brownsville will engage the services of a short-term rental scraper site and software to assist with regulation. The services provided by these software or services include a 24-hour hotline where the tenant or the occupant of the short-term rental can call if there's an issue. The neighbors can also call to, you know, say, hey, you know what, they're a little too loud, or there's a lot of cars because there's issues with parking in the neighborhood. And so they also assist with regulations and notification, and getting a proper count on how many short-term rentals we have within our area.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Why would you hold workshops in July and August if you yourselves are not going to go to a conference until August?
Well, with the. Sorry. So I think what we've established is we're going to go ahead and push the date back so that we can get more feedback, and also look at the cost-benefit analysis, and also look at being competitive and not being too restrictive. And so we'll definitely push these, the implementation and the training. We'll go back, I mean, City Attorney would, suggesting that we can table the item, get everything, get all your questions, come back to you, and then proceed with a new schedule and adoption. So are there any other questions that I could help answer today?
No, not.
And the workshops would be to let them know of what is required of them, you know, letting them know what they need to do to come into compliance.
We might want to have workshops prior to implementing or passing the ordinance so we can get input on what they don't want.
That's true.
So that would be a good direction.
Would a fair motion be to continue the public hearing?
You could, but if the process takes long enough, it might be best to table, and then.
No, but I don't mean a public hearing here. I mean, the staff can have workshops.
No, I'm talking about this item. Before, prior to approving it, instead of approving it to continue or to table, what would be, or we could table it.
I think table may be more appropriate.
I'll move to table it.
Second.
I'm going to abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will look at having the workshops prior and getting more information. That's a good idea.
Most of us abstain.
You know what, though? I don't know if we can have, we have to have four votes.
Yes, you, I don't believe you need to abstain having one of these items unless it's more than 10 or 20% of your income.
No, it's not, no.
So, and I didn't, so I don't believe you have a conflict.
Okay.
But my office will get something right into you so that you're assured of that.
Okay, then I would vote to agree.
To table it. So, all right.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. This time, nobody signed up for public comment, so we'll continue on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number five.
I'm Elizabeth Walker.
May I read the?
Of course.
I'm sorry.
I got it headed myself.
It's a consideration action on resolution number 2019-043, suspending the June 5th, 2019 effective date of AEP Texas Inc. Requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the city served by AEP Texas and authorizes intervention. AEP's Texas Inc. Requested rate change proceedings before the commission by hiring Lloyd Goslink attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals.
Thank you, Madam City Secretary. Again, I'm Elizabeth Walker. I'm in the office of the City Manager, and we have at least one member of an interested party present with us this evening, and maybe a second one. I would be remiss if I did not introduce Mr. Hillcock, who's here on behalf of AEP. And he may join me at the podium should you have any questions specific for the company representative. Additionally, Mr. Leandro Garcia with PUB may be present. The background simply is that AEP submitted its annual filing with the Public Utility Commission of Texas to change the rates it charges for the use of its transmission and distribution lines and related services. It did so in May. AEP is effectively seeking to increase the system-wide distribution rates. In 2015, AEP consolidated its territories, and this year seeks to the very first major rate change, yes, in 12 years?
That's correct.
And effectively would seek to standardize the rate structure across all those previously separate territories. So what is being presented to, or what is being filed with the Public Utility Commission is significantly more complex and is a major change. Yes?
Ms. Spencer.
All right. I wanted to speak to a little bit about the service area that's affected, first by clearing the error of what is not affected. Municipal utilities, as well as cooperative utilities, follow a different rate-setting process. So in Brownsville, the PUB, as well as any customers who are serviced by Magic Family Electric Cooperative, would not be affected by this rate process as engaged by AEP. What staff is recommending in response to this filing by AEP is to adopt the resolution 2019-043 that's presented this evening for consideration. Effectively, this resolution would identify two actions. The first would be to authorize Lloyd Goslink to negotiate on behalf of the City of Brownsville. The city itself is effectively kind of creating its own cooperative of affected municipalities within the AEP service area that would be affected by this rate change. And so together, we have identified Lloyd Goslink. I understand the City of McAllen has already approved this same resolution, similarly authorizing Lloyd Goslink. So that would be.
Let me interrupt directly. There are quite a few cities that have hired this law firm, and AEP does incur the cost on this law firm. The city does not. That's what we're going to work on.
I appreciate that. That's actually the next slide. The second prong of the action embedded within this resolution would be to give notice to the Public Utility Commission of Texas and formally to AEP that the city seeks to suspend the rate change. It would be 90 days so that that special counsel could conduct its due diligence and propose negotiated rates. So yes, the resolution 2019-043, in summary, we would engage consultant expertise in the form of special counsel of Lloyd Goslink. That special counsel charges would be reimbursed by AEP. We'd be pooling this effort with other affected cities of original jurisdiction, like the City of McAllen, as I mentioned, with the intent to negotiate the best rate for affected In the words of Yogi Berra, I just wanted to warn if it sounds like déjà vu all over again. I just wanted to plant the seed that Texas Gas Service engages in a very similar rate-setting process, completely separate utility. But just in case staff comes back to you with a very similar sounding presentation, but it's for a gas utility as opposed to an electric utility, that may be forthcoming. It's kind of the season for setting rates among. It's kind of the season for setting rates among utilities. And, sir, do you have any other comments you'd like to add on behalf of AEP?
No, ma'am. Just here to address any questions that you'll have. That's basically about it. Majority of the cities are suspending, if not denying it, our rate case. And ultimately, it will take all the resolutions from the cities, present it to the Public Utility Commission of Texas, and it'll ultimately be their decision on whether they award us 38 million or 2 million or nothing at all. So, that's where we stand.
The difference between suspend and deny essentially would be just to forego that 90-day due diligence period. So, some cities are just kind of skipping to the end. But we are proposing that we preserve that 90 days to afford special counsel the opportunity to review it.
The 90 days will start on the 6th, two days.
And just for the record, I did personally confer with representatives of PUB, and they are in support of staff's recommendation.
Any questions?
I'll move to, to follow the staff's recommendation on this and hire the services.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved.
Next, we have action item number six. Consideration and action authorizing the City Manager to negotiate and execute a 380 economic development agreement between the City of Brownsville and Maximus.
Good evening, Commissioner. Maximus is currently a company that is located in Brownsville at 4335 Portisline Road. They are proposing a new call center at the Brownsville Plaza, which is also known as the old Target location, which sits vacant. The focus is a call center focused on health services to be located at 2940 Boca Chica Boulevard. The firm is projected to hire 300 workers. That includes benefits. The existing building would be revitalized and refurbished, about 30,000 square feet, which is about a third of the space. They would be spending between 2.5 and $3 million in improvements and upgrades to the building. And the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation has also approved in last week's meeting incentives with respect to job creation for this company. Of course, this is conditioned upon the commission's final approval. This will lead to the development of the shopping center. We have talked to the current property owners because they would be leasing the space, Mimco, and they would be considering additional improvements to the whole shopping center. So, this is kind of the catalyst to possible additional improvements to the center itself. Maximus is still, first of all, they thank the commission for considering the incentive. They wish that they could be here. They are traveling right now. But they believe that the city is being proactive in the redevelopment of a shopping center and is very happy with the commission and the city, and would be very appreciative of you considering this 380 incentive. They would still be reviewing the final language, however, and they may still have some comments with respect to the return on investment. They would be, the city would be, within the next five years with this new location, they would be, we would be generating about 1.1 million in general fund tax revenue. If we offer the proper tax rebate of 50% over a five-year period, that would approximately $65,000. So, for every $1 of incentive, we would get $15 of investment back, which is very, very good. That concludes my presentation, and we just need to take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Next, we have action item number seven. Consideration and action on resolution number 2019-042 to approve one meeting in July.
What date would that be, I'm sorry?
We are going to be having the election on June 22nd. We should be receiving the final results for the canvassing on July the 1st. We do have a regular meeting on July the 2nd and then one on the 16th. We do have eight to 11 days to go ahead and do the canvassing on the votes. So, based on that, you know, I don't know what date you'd like to choose. Do you still want to have it, we can do it on the 2nd, the following week on the 9th?
Well, if we approve this, that would be a special called meeting, right?
We would, yes, have to call a special meeting.
The 9th is a Texas monthly event.
Okay, so...
So, one approach, well, we run the timeline, and if we keep the July 2nd meeting, we could potentially canvas on the 2nd, which is a regular meeting, from the runoff and not have to have a special meeting and then be able to defer the 16th. So, we would suggest as an option, keeping the 2nd, using that for the canvassing, and that being the only meeting. With your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Want to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Motion adjourned.